We are going to get started with our April 21 work session. And our first item is InvestDSM. I don't know if the manager would like to introduce or if you can call Amber up?
No, I think we're all familiar with Amber, but we could sure use an update.
Sure.
Let's do what's happening with InvestDSM.
You bet, you bet. Good morning, everyone. Amber Lynch, Executive Director at InvestDSM. Here this morning to provide an update on InvestDSM's activities this past year. 2024 was maybe our, I think definitely our biggest year yet. So a lot of activity to share with you this morning. And then also happy to answer any questions that you might have. Just a reminder for members of the public who may not be familiar with InvestDSM. We were formed in 2019 by a resolution of the Des Moines City Council and Polk County Board of Supervisors to fill a pretty specific niche in terms of serving neighborhoods that are in the middle of the market, not the most, not the healthiest in the city and not the most challenged either. But those that we can hopefully prevent from experiencing decline and really ratchet up investment and confidence so that our older homes and buildings are protected for a long time. We are also part of a much larger neighborhood revitalization toolkit. And so while our focus as an organization may be in middle market neighborhoods, we are complementary to a number of other tools that the city and other nonprofit partners have built out over the years to assist neighborhoods in Des Moines with all types of challenges. In terms of 2024, we celebrated our fifth anniversary as an organization. And I know a number of you were able to be there to help us celebrate that. We've also, we've grown to a staff of eight at this point. And in this past year, we also brought on a part-time CFO just to help us make sure that we're overseeing our finances as they become more complicated. With a startup organization, you know, you're building internal systems from the ground up. And so with now thousands of project records, we've reached a point where we're designing a custom database system. And we've just begun implementing the first phase of that. So operationally, we continue to grow as an organization. We also received two awards from the Iowa Chapter of the American Planning Association last year and went through another audit cycle and came out clear on the other side. So those are kind of the operational accomplishments that were highlights last year. We also, as the council is aware, with, in partnership with the city, we completed the planning process for two new special investment districts. And so we've now gone from our original four areas up to six neighborhoods that we will be serving. And we'll talk a little bit about what that program rollout looks like towards the end of the presentation. We, in terms of our grant programs, it was definitely our biggest year. We completed almost 340 grant-funded projects last year, resulting in another $30 million of investment just in 2024 alone. So we'll talk a little bit more about those grant programs. We have six core grant programs, five that really work with various types of property owners in each special investment district. But the vast majority of that work always happens with homeowners who are living in these neighborhoods. So even looking back since 2020, over 93% of all of the projects that we've completed with grant funds have been with homeowners who are already living in these neighborhoods and are making upgrades to their own properties. And under every single grant program, we cost-share those project costs. And so InvestDSM is always covering a portion of the project costs, and then the property owner is always covering a portion of the project costs. This just takes a look at all of the completed projects in 2024, and each row is a different grant program. And so you can see the 338 that we completed there. We're getting a really good leverage ratio on these. Of course, our commercial projects is where we put in the fewest dollars compared to the largest dollars that the property owner puts in from other sources. Same with single-family developer projects. Those are typically when a single-family developer is coming in, purchasing a home, doing a really substantial rehab, and then reselling it on the market once they're done. And those two programs are where we put in the fewest dollars comparatively to what they're putting in. Homeowners, we tend to be kind of a one-to-two match on those programs, and that average has stayed pretty much the same. But in addition to the projects that complete within the year, because everything involves construction, we have a lot of projects that start in one year and then complete in the following year. So we ran over 730 grants through our doors last year that were either in the application pipeline stage with a grant signed and under construction or that completed in 2024. So with a staff of eight, you can imagine that that keeps us very busy throughout the year. But the interest and the demand for these programs is significant, and the feedback that we receive from neighbors and property owners who have used them is largely positive. Just another view of this, taking this not just 2024, but all the way back to when we rolled out the first program in 2020. We've now completed over 1,300 projects in our first four special investment districts, and that's prompted over $76 million worth of investment in the homes and the commercial buildings in those areas. This is pretty unprecedented in the city and in fact is more than double what I reported to you at the end of last year. So 2024 was significant. We really, as an organization, I think, have hit our stride in terms of operating these grant programs. And it's really exciting to see and to feel as you drive through the streets the change We also do a fair amount of development work. And our rehab pipeline, we got to completion on a number of pretty large and substantial rehab projects, particularly in the Drake neighborhood. We did also have one in the Franklin area that sold this past year. And just looking at these six properties, seven properties that are up on the board here, looking at that and the assessed values that we had before we started rehab projects and then afterwards in 2025, the value of those properties has increased by two and a half million. A lot of these were in pretty rough shape when we started. So the one in the, the middle on the top row has just recently won an award for historic preservation from the Des Moines Heritage Trust. So we're pretty proud of that one, and it's one of four that we've touched on the corner of 31st and Cottage Grove. And so there's been a pretty major transformation of that corner over the past few years. We've also started to do a fair amount of new infill construction. A lot of that happens when we either have a vacant lot that InvestDSM is getting its hands on or when there's a house that's beyond repair and we need to take that down and have it replaced. In most situations, the way that we're doing that is we're selling those vacant lots to a home builder and then having them build those homes. And we often grant fund those with our single-family developer program, again, to fill that gap between what it costs to do the new construction and what it can sell for at the end. But these four in particular that you see in the photos, InvestDSM continued to own through construction and then sold at the end. Excuse me. So just for these four properties, we increased that assessed value of the four total by 1.7 million between pre-project and post-project. The home builders we work with are a variety, and so we have a number of for-profit partners. And then we also have several nonprofit partners that are building with us. These four were Executive Interiors, Tandem Builders, which is now MDH Construction, and then Cutler Construction, which is Peter Cutler. But we also have homes that are not pictured on this slide with Home Inc., with NFC properties each year, and then Madden Construction has started building with us as well. So these are pretty exciting additions to the neighborhoods. They've sold really, really well. They typically sell very quickly. Sometimes we have offers before they're even hitting the market. So there's definitely an appetite for well-designed infill new construction in our existing neighborhoods.
How much, so there were seven of these? Do you know how much you put in in terms of dollars from InvestDSM on these?
Off the top of my head, no. But what I can say is build costs are typically in the 400,000s. Now, we have one here in Drake, the top right corner. That one is a larger property because we were fitting it in with the other homes. That build cost was 605? Yeah, just over 600,000 for that one. But typically, the build costs for the homes are low 400s. And then in Columbus Park, we're selling mid-300s. Franklin higher, we were around 570, I think, for that one, 575 in the sales price. And the one in Drake sold for 630. So we do still have a gap in these because we've got acquisition costs, we have holding costs in there. But typically, what we're finding on both the rehab and the new construction side is that our gap equates to the acquisition and holding costs for the properties.
And we're seeing the gap go down.
Yes.
Having certain on the board.
The gap is starting to go down as well.
As we build more, the gap goes down.
So we're close to break even?
We're closing the, we're closing the gap. We always break even in some of these situations, but one thing they've done is taking lots and split them in two.
Right.
So there might be a lot, especially in Columbus Park where you had, you build one house and you really get two, and then you can build another one. So dividing lots into smaller parcels.
Yep.
So then that will help close.
Yep. Carl?
And the designs on these infill homes, are these your designs or?
They are, yes.
How does that work out?
Yep. Yeah, InvestDSM, we've really kind of taken on the design piece of it. We've tried several times to put that onto the builders, and it just hasn't worked out for one reason or another. We found it works better if we take on the design piece of it. We're really trying to exceed the standards that the city has put in place through the zoning code and make sure, you know, they, we're often looking to put a main bedroom suite on the first floor so that it could be a home if somebody needs a bedroom on the main floor and can't get up the stairs later, that that option is available to them. So we're taking on the design with various architectural partners, and then we give that design to the builder and ask them to build this. And that's true for these homes where we kept ownership through the build process as well as the lots that we're selling for new infill construction. Typically, we're agreeing to have the builder build one of InvestDSM's house plans, and then we grant fund the gap on those as well. I think the council is aware of this, but we've also taken on a number of larger redevelopment sites throughout our special investment districts. So I just wanted to provide a brief update on the status of those. In Drake, we have 3125 Kingman Boulevard. It's the former site of a public nuisance property, and it's quite a large lot that sits between two multifamily buildings. And so there, we've had a project under development with Home Inc. and then Scott and Molly Cutler, so the other Cutler development. And we're looking at putting in about a 24-unit condo building there so that we have some different types of affordable ownership options coming into the neighborhood for households that may not want the maintenance of a yard. So we are, we've been working through that. Of course, with the Cutlers being on board, they're looking at having an incredibly energy-efficient building with a lot of sustainability features as well. And so we're just working through the financing stack on that project. All of these have gotten a little bit harder with construction costs continuing to stay expensive and interest rates continuing to stay high. And so I think it'll, it'll be a little bit of time still before you see any building activity on these properties. But the good news is, you know, we've tried to prioritize getting a good project in the ground and doing something well over doing it too fast and making sure that it's something that the neighborhood can be really proud of. So this one, they're working through financing on that. We also, over this past year, bought a half a block of property just to the east of Drake Park. That has 11 residential homes on it, and we are in the process of finishing up historic survey work on that area and then working to reestablish the alley on that block so that garages can be built back for those homes. And we expect to start the first, the first rehab of those homes this year, this spring, aiming to get three under construction this year at the very minimum, hopefully four, and then we'll kind of work through them from there. So that's in Drake. In Franklin, we have the corner property at 48th and Franklin, the former Northwestern Hospital site. InvestDSM purchased that from NDC late in 2024 because we have a better ability to hold the land longer term. And so right now, our plan is to kind of reinvigorate that visioning process with the neighborhood and the concept plan for what that will become either late this year or early in 2026. In Columbus Park, we have two historic commercial buildings on Southeast 6th. And so we're working through architectural design on those, and we will be looking for a development partner to come in and assist with the renovation of those buildings and hopefully get both the storefronts and the upper-story residential units back into service. And then last, but certainly not least, we continue to have a lot of activity up in the Highland Park Business District. And so we're working through a number of things right now. The red square is the Highland Park Flats. I saw the developer agreement just went through council on that. So that will be a two-story, 12-unit residential building that will be coming in. We currently, InvestDSM owns that property, and so we've been waiting for the developer to get through all of the city process, and they have an option to purchase that from us. So I think we'll close on that later this spring. The yellow parcels are the site that we've now assembled at 6th and Euclid on the southwest corner. We've gone through and over a year-long process with the developer there. We've got a great design for the project, but the funding is just not all coming together. We still have a pretty large gap on that project. So for the moment, we've put that on hold until hopefully, you know, some of these other projects get done and the market environment starts to improve a little bit, and then we'll circle back to that site as well. And then on the north side of Euclid, the parcels that are outlined in blue, we're working on assembling those for an expanded parking lot to better serve the business district. And so we're working with all of the adjacent property owners there, and we're in the design and engineering process for that right now. That will also include a public plaza space and some outdoor patio space for the restaurants. So Chucks and then the Klein Building will end up with an outdoor patio as part of that plan.
Amber, quick question on the yellow rectangles. It looks like there's a sliver, another parcel that's lightly outlined in yellow, or is that just my imagination?
It is on the map, on the underlying base map. I don't know why, actually. At one point, that building was condoed, and that's the only reason I can think of why it would be outlined that way, but it's not part of this.
It's not part of what you're doing.
It is not part of what we're doing. You're welcome. Just to kind of wrap things up here, I just wanted to share some of the feedback that we receive. We do an exit survey with all of our grant program participants that are coming through and ask them, you know, how have you seen InvestDSM impacting your neighborhood? And so this is just some of their comments. I think we're in a really strong position right now. The neighborhoods that we're currently serving seem to really understand the programs and are taking advantage consistently. And we're really excited to get started in our two new special investment districts. So I think I've got just a little bit about that. So so far this year, you know, we're over a quarter in. We've already completed another 60 projects through our homeowner renovation program and have another 150 that are signed and under construction, and that seems to be kind of the typical pipeline at this point in time. So for as many as we're completing, we're getting just as many coming in the door. And so that 150 number seems to be relatively consistent in terms of what we have under construction for homeowner projects at any given time. We also, our Block Challenge grant program is seasonal, and so we have a new round of that coming in, and we already are aware of six to seven different teams that are organizing, including one in Union Park, which is one of our new special investment districts. So that's exciting. We're seeing significant change on East Granger Avenue down in Columbus Park this year with a lot of new infill construction going on. And part of that is because there were so many vacant lots down in that neighborhood when we got started. And as Mayor Bozen mentioned, we have a lot where there was, there was one house sitting on 120 feet of frontage. And so we've split that back to the original 40-foot plating and are infilling back with three homes instead of one or two homes instead of one, just depending on the lot size. We're also working on standing up a couple more advisory committees to our Board of Directors. So again, as we grow, looking to add additional technical expertise. And so we have our finance committee going already, and we have two more that we'll be looking to put into place. And then with our new special investment districts, we are opening up our homeowner grant programs starting on May 1st. So both Block Challenge and homeowner renovation grant programs will be available to them this year. The other grant programs will most likely wait until January 2026 to open up. So things like rental rehab and, excuse me, single-family developer commercial grants, we need to give our staff a little bit of time to handle the volume of homeowners. We already have a waiting list of over 250 people, so we need to make sure that we can manage all of those before we start taking on some of the larger, more complicated projects. But the focus is certainly on how do we introduce InvestDSM to those neighborhoods this year? How do we engage those community members with us and with each other? And then supporting them, they each are working on a launch project to kick off implementation in their neighborhood, and so we're supporting that as well. With that, I have one last piece of information that I came together over the weekend, and so it is not part of my slides, but I'll pass it to the council, and I can share the slide with the city clerk afterwards so that they can update the presentation that's posted online. Sure. So with 2025 assessments out, we're starting to take a look at how those have changed in the special investment districts since we got started. And this is pretty preliminary still. I think there's, there's a lot more analysis that likely could be done. But what we're seeing is that the average assessed value in the special investment districts, the first four special investment districts, has outperformed the city or neighborhoods that had similar conditions, either in the dollar change between 2019 and 2025 or in the percent change or both. Now Franklin is the one exception to that, where it did not exceed the city in terms of percent change, but it had a higher average assessed value than the citywide average as a starting point. So I'm not nearly, I, that's not a cause for concern. In fact, I'm, it's probably a good thing that it hasn't seen as significant of an increase since that base value was higher to begin with. So I think these are, it's a positive indication that things are moving in the right direction. Certainly not the only indicator that we want to be looking at, and it's a point in time, it's an early point in time still because there's always a lag between the activity that you have and then how that impacts sales and assessed values down the road. But I often get a lot of questions about what assessments are doing and how they've changed. And so since we have this new data, I thought I'd at least share a piece of it with all of you.
Amber, so that's a 2019, January 1 valuation?
Yes.
Which should have been the same for 2020 as well.
Right, yes. Yep, yep. So we kind of look at that as a pre-intervention point since assessments, the whole city is reassessed every other year. And then 2025, you know, not all the adjustments will have hit yet at this point in time, but this is as of April 1st.
Okay. I mean, good inform, it's really positive and it's good information.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Please.
The $10,000 that's given to each special investment, how's it decided, how is that spent or how, how is that money given out?
Yeah, typically, we work with our steering committee. So the group of neighbors that came together during the planning process has stayed together with us as a steering committee. They meet with us, you know, once or twice a year at this point, and some of the membership has shifted. But typically, we're working with that group, either they're bringing an idea forward to us and saying, this is how we'd like to spend those funds this year, or sometimes we'll have something come up and say, you know, do you think this is a fit? So often, it's been used for public art type things or for branding-related things, and then sometimes for community event celebration-type things. And we do have some, you know, small parameters guidance around how those funds can be used.
That, in the Drake area, that swing that's in the triangle, I think that was?
Yes, that was funded with those funds in their new Drake neighborhood sign, so in the triangle between Cottage Grove and Kingman.
And there's some murals in the Franklin area that are kind of on the edge of their area that are at 48th and University.
By Campbell's.
Yep. Some of the mural work done up in the Highland Park Business District that the funds have been used for that as well. Sometimes they've used it for Art Week.
Columbus did an additional swing in their park, I think?
They did, which I think is getting installed this spring. There were some delays with the manufacturer. So yes, with Columbus Park, there's a new swing set going into the park there, and it was partially funded with these funds.
Mayor, I have one comment. InvestDSM is just an excellent example of holding, purchasing and holding property for development. And when the new housing study comes out, we've talked about the city needing to do that. But again, you're an example of how that can successfully be done.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Cullen?
I'm, I'm looking at one of your screens, so if you, like, if you wanted to go back to it, you could.
The only thing I have left, I think, and we can go back, is a slide that says, question?
Oh, yeah.
So, perfect.
I'm on the one that just has all, all your grant history. I don't think it has a, has a number, but yeah, that, that one works. First off, I really appreciate everything you guys do, and there's a few people in government or semi-government that are as responsive as, as your team. I had some questions, and it took Christopher about 24 hours to come pick me up at the end of a day of work, and we drove the neighborhood for about an hour looking at, at projects. And both of your command of the details of these projects is impressive. Makes, makes taxpayers feel good when, when people know exactly where the money's going. So thank you. I would, I would say this, the conversations, the neighborhoods that I, that I, that I go to in my ward. go to in my ward, I, I think there's, like, growing skepticism, because most of the headlines about Invest DSM have been about the few very expensive projects that, that are out there. And I, like, I was just looking at these numbers while you were making your presentation, and I think they're instructive. Like, if you look at where your most grants are in block grant, those average less than 2,000. The next, the next situation is the, is the homeowner renovation. That, those all average about 12,000. And, and I think it's really important that we continue to tell that story, because it's really easy to get distracted by the, you know, the new shiny objects.
Yes.
But the real, the real investment that we're making by a long ways is in helping existing homeowners improve their own house because they want to stay there. And I think this conversation was probably ignited a little bit by the coverage of Charles and CCB's conversation.
Sure.
That, that made people, I think, a lot of people feel, maybe it wasn't founded, but made them feel like, you know, the, the city wants our house for somebody else.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Sure.
And, and I think we have to continue to push dollars, both at Invest DSM, but also at the city overall, in helping people that are happy residents build, build a house and a life that will last them a long time. And, and it, it, like, it, it proves it in the numbers a little bit. The average grant there was 12,000. And, and the average, in the next line for single-family developer and new stuff, it's almost 90,000. And, and so I think we can, I think we have to measure this as, how many of our residents are, are we making happy, both in the neighborhoods that they live in, but also the house that they live in? And, and so I, I share that, because I think there's a, I think there's a communication task in front of us to tell the story about all those homeowner renovations that are our big wins for the people that live there and for the city.
And at the same time, we're filling in the empty lots.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I think the one thing too, you know, I, I've heard from people that were going to definitely move if they couldn't renovate and add the extra bedroom or redo the kitchen or redo. And this, if nothing, has stabilized our neighborhoods, the ones we've been in, and brought a community. I mean, people get to know each other because of the, the Block Challenge Grants. We see that even in some of the ones we've done. So I think that, that's the underlying thing that you, maybe there's a dollar number on it, but the community that's being built, I think, is what's been pretty significant. And you look at Highland Park and the, what has happened up there and, and some of the, you know, strength of seeing what you can do by taking an old building and making it a great place to be and stay. So I think that that's one of the biggest things I see, is the camaraderie that's coming out of the communities.
Yeah.
We, any other questions? Just want to thank Amber and her staff, Christopher's here, for all the work they've done, because they have taken something and built it in a very short timeframe and making a significant difference, to the point that everybody wants Invest DSM to come to their neighborhood. So we want to thank you on behalf of the city for the work you've done to show a different way of how you revitalize, but by bringing all the partners that we currently have together and working well together to have the common goal, so.
Thank you.
Just remind us of a quote from the people who are here from Springfield, Missouri, just talking about, you know, how, how this worked with the county and?
Oh, so we've had, we've actually had several communities from Iowa, Springfield, Missouri, Syracuse, New York, so several communities from across the country that have come to visit Invest DSM or have spent time with me on a Zoom call, trying to understand how we're doing what we're doing and how it might apply to their community. And Springfield, we've had a lot of interaction with, and they were, they were just blown away by the fact that our city and county are working together to get this done. And I don't remember exactly his comment, but it was one of the council members who had come to visit us and, and just was, was shocked, almost.
Something like, maybe, we don't do anything with the county.
Yeah. They, they were unfamiliar with that type of relationship. So we are certainly fortunate to have it, certainly fortunate to have both the city and county elected officials as representatives on our board and really as supporters of this endeavor. It was, it was brand new not all that long ago. And I think, you know, everybody at this table was part of taking that risk with us to say, hey, you know, what we've been doing maybe isn't working as well as we would like it to, and we need to try something different to protect our neighborhoods and our community. And I think that, I think we're doing it. So thank you very much for all of your support as well.
And that's true. It's also having the two entities together made a critical difference. So we also thank Polk County for, along with everything that's been going on, so.
Yep. All right.
Okay, thank you. And another exciting item coming. If people like audits.
So I think James Remington, our Deputy Director of Finance, is going to lead the conversation on our update, once a year on our audit.
Okay, well, while we get that pulled up, there we go. Yeah, I'm here to introduce our third-party financial statement auditor with RSM. This is a statutorily required presentation every year to council to go over our audit results for fiscal 2024. One, one caveat this year is that the audit's not officially issued just yet. We expect it to be issued the end of this week, early next week. So these are preliminary results. It's unlikely anything's going to change, but if it does, it'll be communicated in writing to council at the, at the next presentation. So without further ado, I'll bring up Aaron with RSM. He's headed up our audit this year.
Well, thank you, James, and thank you for having me, everyone. As mentioned, my name is Aaron Calderon. I serve as the Audit Manager on your annual financial statement audit. And just here to share a couple key points related to our audit, some of the things we've found, other updates we want to provide you on, on how the audit went, as well as I'll call out a couple key financial trends, notable numbers within the city's financial statements. And then I'll end with a few points regarding the compliance procedures we perform in relation to the funding from the federal government that the city receives. So with that said, just to start out with, again, some of these key communications that as your auditors, we always want to make sure we make to you all. I'll begin by just talking a little bit about the responsibilities of the auditor. You know, anytime we have a chance to meet with you all, we just want to reiterate that. And so as you're familiar with, of course, we don't draft the city's financials, we don't compile those numbers. That's Nick James and their teams that take care of that. That being said, we come in as an independent third party, we perform our audit procedures, and then ultimately, we express our opinion over the city's financial statements. So it's really that third-party independent role that is key in our responsibilities. As mentioned, you know, we're working on finalizing the audit, expect to have that finalized within the, the next week or so. And at this time, we expect to issue what is called an unmodified opinion. That's another term for a clean opinion. It means it's the highest level of opinion that the, the city can receive. And really, what that boils down to is that means that all of the, the numbers within the city's financial statements are materially correct as a result of our procedures. We've been able to verify that. In terms of the financial statements themselves, you know, every year, especially the past couple of years, there have been some new accounting standards that have been implemented. The past couple of years, we've had a couple bigger ones, things like leases, IT subscriptions, changes in how those are recorded. There was a, a new accounting standard this year, but I would describe it as not being as big of a, a deal. You know, it did not change the financials as significantly as you might be used to from the past couple of years. This is the GASB 100 Statement. That's called the Accounting Changes and Error Corrections Statement. Primarily what this deals with is, it sort of standardizes if the city was having changes in their accounting practices, any errors identified in the financial statements, that type of thing. It would standardize how those are presented in future years, whether the opening balances are changed, whether the financials are changed prospectively, that type of thing. Obviously, that's the, the type of statement that really doesn't have an impact until that type of occurrence actually occurs. So as I say, you won't notice any major differences in the financial statements this year versus the prior years. There was a small change with one of the funds of the city becoming what's called a major fund, so presented a little bit more clearly in the financials. So that was clarified a little bit, but otherwise, as I say, no major changes. Any set of financial statements are going to have accounting estimates in them, and so anytime we have a chance to meet with you as well, we like to call attention to those, emphasize those. Within this set of financial statements, there are a couple of key estimates that we've identified and performed specific auditing procedures over. You know, estimates inherently, there's going to be some judgment management, judgment involved in that. And so that could potentially be an area where bias would be injected in the financials. For that reason, again, we want to call those out to you, and then we also perform dedicated accounting procedures over those as well. Within these financial statements, as I say, a couple of key areas, just to call to your attention. The first estimate is the fair value of any investments that the city holds, ensuring that those are recorded accurately and appropriately as of year end. There's also the allowance for a doubtful account, so any receivables that the city has on the books at year end, estimating what portion of those may not be collectible, even if that estimate happens to be zero in certain cases, that's of course still an estimate, so we look into that. The depreciable lives of capital assets, that's another key estimate within the financials. Any building, equipment, property that the city acquires, the economic useful life of that needs to be estimated. And so the city has policies and procedures in place to help assist with that estimation. The, the self-insurance liability, that's another key estimate for your workers' comp and health insurance liability as of year end. And then finally, the, the pension and the OPEB plans of the city, the other post-employment benefit plan. Those are, the city involves their own actuaries and statewide actuaries to assist with valuations of those plans. And then on our end, we also involve our own actuarial specialists to help with that. So that, again, is a, another key estimate within the financials. Another key item just want to highlight, so this is always very important, we want to call out. As part of our audit, we had no audit adjustments to the financial statements, no entries posted to the financials to adjust them. So obviously, that's, you know, very complimentary of management. Really, what that boils down to, what that means, is that the financial numbers you've been reviewing over the course of this past year did not change when we came out and performed our procedures. Those are accurate with what you've been reviewing already, and so you can, of course, have some confidence in those. Every once in a while, in our audit, there are some items that are not adjusted, they're not as big dollar amounts, not as significant, but that we do identify them and want to share them with you. These are what we call uncorrected misstatements, so they're not going to be reflected in the financial statements, but they are, you know, worth reporting to you in our opinion. In the current year, we had a couple of those items. The first relates to the MHA. With the MHA, there was a, what we call an accounts payable cutoff error. So this is something where, as of year end, the balances were correct. This actually related to the prior year, something that should have been recorded at that time. You know, in terms of dollar amounts, we're actually talking about $10,000, although we do project it. So in terms of our projection, we're looking at an estimation of possibly $45,000. Excuse me, I apologize, should have taken a drink of water before getting up here. Um, oh, I appreciate it. In addition to that, we also have what was the arbitrary praj liability, pardon me. This is about $1.7 million. Now, that will sound like a big number, of course. What I will point out is, this was disclosed in the financials, disclosed in the notes. We just want to make sure that this was recorded on the book. So this relates to, thank you very much. I do apologize for that. This relates to excess interest that was earned on the bonds that were issued by the city. It's just an amount that needs to be returned to the federal government, you know, very standard, just federal government requirement. Finally, what I'll point out is, if there was anything unusual, improper, any difficulties in our audit, we would make sure that we share that with you. That could be disagreements between ourselves and management, that could be, you know, significant issues, contentious issues, consultations with other accountants, that type of thing. I will say, in this case, you know, we had none of those. So again, a very good audit. We do appreciate management's assistance, of course, and none of those unusual items to report to you all. So with that said, I'll talk a little bit about some of the, the key numbers of the financial statements. I've got on the slide just a couple of key information. We'll start with revenues comparing to the prior year. You know, again, as I said, there were no entries as part of our audit, but, so, so, you know, in other words, these are going to be consistent with what you're already familiar with. So for that reason, I'm not going to call out any number, but just going to call out a, a couple of the key trends. So total revenues for the city's governmental funds, those have actually decreased by about $30 million year-over-year. That represents about a 6% decrease. Now, within that, you can see, and I'll, I'll point out, the blue bars are for the current year, 2024, the green bars are for the prior year, 2023. What you can see is that this relates primarily to two areas. The first is going to be taxes, the second is going to be intergovernmental. And I guess I'll actually go ahead and start with the intergovernmental that has the, the bigger decrease. We're talking about $20 million there. And I'll apologize again. Drink a little bit too cup, too much coffee this morning, I do apologize. So we're talking about $20 million there related to intergovernmental. Primarily, this relates to the ARP of the COVID funding. And so that's not any sort of, you know, long-term trend we're seeing, that COVID funding as it was spent. It, you know, it, it came in waves on and off, and so it did skew the numbers a little bit comparatively. Again, we had completely expected to see a decrease as those funds are spent down. The second category, that's going to be taxes. That's only down by about 7.5 million, so obviously, that's $7 million, but as a percentage, much smaller. Primarily, what that relates to is the lost tax revenues. There were just lower collections in that in the current year, and so we've seen a decrease there as well. Moving on to the expenditure side of the ledger, in terms of expenditures, we did see an increase this year. That was about $47 million, or about 10%. You know, as you can see, there are, of course, some increases across the various categories, but really, the key increase here, and you can see that on your screen in the second to the right, is capital outlay. Capital outlay, that has to do with any capital assets purchased by the city. This is actually up by about $27 million year-over-year, and that equates almost exactly to the purchase of the new city hall. So if that wasn't factored in, these types of purchases actually would have a slight decrease year-over-year.
May I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
For Health and Social Services, why did it go down this year?
Sure.
I, off the top of my head, I wouldn't have anything specific. A lot of this comes into a conversation around timing. So most likely, last year was just sort of a outlier year. We had some expenditures at year end that accrued or whatever, as opposed to falling in the next fiscal year. So when something's that small of a shift year-to-year, it's almost always a timing, accrual situation. There wasn't any program that I'm aware of, off the top of my head, that had any big shifts, almost certainly just a timing issue.
A lot of COVID funding was spent in that category.
Yep.
So if that would have decreased.
And that would be consistent with the, the revenue trend observed as well. Moving on, the, the general fund, this is one thing, the fund balance that we look at, it's just one measurement of operational health. Obviously, there are, there are a number of measurements, this is just one way of looking at things. In terms of the fund balance, the fund balance, that's really the, the difference between the city's assets and liabilities. And here specifically, we're looking at the unrestricted portion of the fund balance, that portion where the city has discretion in spending it, there aren't amounts legally restricted, that type of thing. The calculation we have up here on screen. The calculation we have up here on screen, this is really, it's in days, so the fund balance in days, and really what it represents is the number of days that the city could go by spending as normal before that fund balance would run out. So again, another way to think about that is if the city stopped taking in revenues entirely within the general fund, how long could the city continue to spend before the fund balance ran out? You can see in the current year, we're seeing about 161 days. So while that is, of course, a slight decrease from the prior year, you can see based on the historical trend, pardon me, that that's a significant increase from the last several years. So overall, this is, the general fund is a lot healthier than in prior years. Again, this is just one metric as of year end, so by no means does it tell the whole story, but you can continue to see that the general fund has quite a strong fund balance. And then finally, just to talk a little bit about the business-type funds, these are things like utilities, parking, the golf courses. This up here and on the right, or pardon me, on the left, you'll see the current year, 2024 numbers, on the right, you'll see 2023. Each of these bars is going to represent operating income or loss for each of the particular funds. Overall, operating income, that went up about $7 million, that's actually about a 20% increase year over year. The two biggest are going to be, of course, the sewer and stormwater. Those are up by about 1.2 and then 1 million respectively. Within those, you know, primarily that was driven by increased usage year over year. And so that positive result, of course, led to that overall increase in revenues across the board. And then finally, just to end with a couple of brief comments on the compliance work we perform. So the federal government has certain requirements. As the city receives funding from the federal government, they ask us to perform certain dedicated audit procedures. Within that case, you know, we issue two specific reports addressing those items. The first is our report over government auditing standards. What this report will do is, is this will summarize to you whether we've become aware of any significant issues in the city's internal controls, any material weaknesses, that type of thing. So in that case, we are happy to report, we have not become aware of anything like that. No material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. This would be another clean opinion from us on this particular topic. As mentioned, then, there's our else of procedures we perform, the federal single audit. This is over the federal aid that the cities receive. Each year, we're going to pick several programs, several grants to perform dedicated auditing procedures over. This year, there were three of those, you can see on your screen. One of those was, of course, the COVID programs, which continue to become an area of increased scrutiny from the federal government. In addition to that, we also tested the highway planning grants and then the community development block grants as well. These three programs, they account for about 83% of total federal money is received and spent during the year. So that's quite a good coverage just from these three. And similarly, you know, we performed our dedicated procedures, the ones the federal government gives to us. When we did that, we noted, you know, no, no issues, no compliance findings, no concerns in term of internal control or anything like that. So again, in terms of our federal audit compliance opinion, this as well would be considered a clean opinion on our part, pardon me. So with that said, that really covers the key items I'd want to share with you, results of our audit and whatnot. But if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to respond to those.
Sure. So when, when this audit is finalized, do, does the city send this on to other agencies or do you send it on?
Yep, a little bit of a combination, just because there are several areas where this gets filed. So I'd say for the most part, it is the city making those filings. There's a couple with the federal government, we assist.
Yep, we assist with the data collection form with the federal government, that's mostly the single audit communication. We also submit it to the auditor of state, which then makes it public. We also put it out on our website, which is obviously publicly available. And those are the two main sources for people to access it. They can also request it directly, email, come in, whatever they want. So it's publicly available as soon as it's finished, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So our final presentation this morning, this was sign enforcement, we have Eric Lund need to present.
Eric, you know signs are my favorite topic.
I know. I figured you went from the worst to the best today, right? Hopefully I don't put you to sleep, but I'll try to move through it quick. And then maybe it's easier if there's more questions than answers in the process that we'll try to address those. And you might have been thinking this was more going to be an enforcement, but it's probably going to be more about some changes today in the, you're going to have a set hearing item, I think, item 31 on the agenda, that will have a number of zoning and planning and design changes, but part of that is the sign regulations that I'm going to be talking about here. Just a little background, about as long as you've had Invest DSM, we've also had our current configuration of zoning and planning and design ordinances. So we're right at that five-year horizon of kind of trying to reevaluate and figure out, you know, what's working, what's not working. And there's some things that weren't necessarily working and that we need to address. I think there's a few more that were coming along, but we need to start incrementally making some changes to, to promote both the positive business environment and also make it easier for us to enforce our regulations. Currently, we have a sign program where we require sign permits for signs. Generally, those are signs that you find on the walls of buildings or signs that are on the ground. Our new ordinance, and actually going back to 2013, we required all freestanding signs to be monument signs. There are obviously a huge number of pre-existing signs or non-conforming signs that are pole signs. Also in there, we have ground, we have billboards, which are ordinance calls, general advertising signs. We do a number of temporary signs, so anything you see, like commercial real estate signs that are posted on property that are large, we do require permitting for. There's a lot of signs that are on campuses, whether they're counting towards their earned signage or not, we still want to have sign permits to make sure that they're safe, structurally sound. So there is the requirement that we have sign contractors do that. So you have to be a competent sign contractor that takes an exam, and we approve them as a locally licensed sign contractor. All the permits actually lie in chapter 26, which is the building, where all the building codes are. So the permitting actually comes through chapter 26, even though the allowances for what you earn for signage is in chapter 134, the zoning ordinance. The zoning, functionally in the city, signs that are permitted actually go through the zoning division in neighborhood services, which, as you recall, or most of you probably recall, neighborhood services and development services used to be one large department, community development. So that duty of sign permitting was, followed the zoning enforcement track, and that's where it lies in the organization. Let's quickly go over framing the issue. There's a handful of things that have come about in the last five years in just operating our sign program that we felt needed to be addressed. And again, I think there's some more going forward, so you'll start to see some maybe one or two item changes as they become necessary in the future, but this is kind of a batch that we thought we needed to talk about. Some of it is the way that the wording was in the ordinance made it confusing for our enforcement staff to actually enforce. There was some inconsistency in how things were getting enforced with regard to what was considered a permitted sign versus what requires permits. I think the language in the zoning ordinance made it seem like whether it was permitted by the allowances in the, in the, in the zoning ordinance, but really it meant requiring a permit under chapter 26. We did want to broaden our ability. There is a case called Gilbert, Supreme Court case, that really limited cities' abilities to regulate signage. No longer could we regulate by content, we have to regulate by the physical aspects of the sign. There's a little bit of wiggle room in there for what's in the public interest. Well, that is a little too tight perhaps in our code for what we feel is in the public interest, so we want to put another clause that gives us a little flexibility without trying to get in too much hot water from the legal side of things. But we certainly think there's signs that aren't really meant for commercial speech, but they're definitely in the public interest. But we don't want to jeopardize our entire sign program by not defining that in our code, so.
What exactly does that mean?
I mean, there's got to be a specific example.
Well, I'll give you an example, like educational kiosks on a trail. And I'll get into more detail on some of these, but, because of the change. But, so there's a few things that we, really, the average person probably thinks is more of a governmental function or a public interest function versus a commercial enterprise function of the, of the speech of the sign. Again, because we can't regulate content, we have to be real careful. So it's a fine line. We thought this little change that we're putting in there gives us a little more wiggle room to, to try to accommodate some things we think make sense, if that, if that helps. Illuminated signs on canopies and awnings. The ordinance in 2019 decided that we didn't want illuminated signs, and I think we found that the market trend and the interest is really, and the Board of Adjustment was pretty much granting the relief routinely to allow illuminated signs on, especially gas canopies. So it just made more sense to, to open that up a little bit. Electronic video display signs, you actually already made a change because of the timing necessary for the new corporate sponsors for Iowa Event Center, to, to give them a little opportunity to convert their hanging banners into something that they can make more effective for their, again, I think it's a governmental purpose, but they might have some commercial speech with those, so we do call those signs. A big change in the variance test, so that more of our sign appeals are not the very strict, hard variances. There would still be a few of those things that are in that, but we don't want so many of our signs to have to prove that they have a hardship beyond any economic use of the property, otherwise, this gives a little more flexibility to work within what's in the character, what's practical. So that change will be there. And then again, as I mentioned, we want to make sure there's language that makes it clear about what's, requires permits and what doesn't in chapter 26.
Is that the monument sign from pole sign to the monument side? If the pole sign gets wrecked, we're still requiring?
Yeah, that's, that's still a variance, yeah. Yep. So that some, some of the things would still trigger variance appeals, like most of the electronic display things, billboards and pole signs and other types of prohibited signs would still take, take variances.
So you'd still need to go to the?
Well, either way, most of these are still, if they're, if they're not minor enough, they're going to trigger going to the Board of Adjustment. It just gives the Board of Adjustment a different standard to look at from a, it probably makes more logical sense and, and practical sense.
As part of the consent agenda or?
It might be on the consent agenda, or if there's some issue with the character or some of these other tests, it might not be on the consent agenda. But I think there would still need to, it still offers a public forum, so if there's some controversy or some issue with it. But it doesn't require them to meet the hardship test, which almost always these days, the zoning Board of Adjustment is saying no, because of, we, we had a case where the zoning Board of Adjustment was told by the court that they weren't applying the variance test consistently and in accordance with what it says. So now they're very careful, and which means pretty much no variances. Prohibited signs, a little bit of change. Again, clarifying that the signs not having a required permit by chapter 26 are prohibited. So there's a number of types of signs that are small or minor, they don't require permits, but they're still regulated in the zoning ordinance. But we wanted to clarify that it was signs that didn't have a required permit, so we could go after that with an enforcement item.
I don't understand that. Can you explain?
I know, that's, that was the whole problem with our inspectors. It read that any, any, any sign, any non-permitted sign was considered a prohibited sign. Well, that was interpreted as anything in the, not allowed by the allowances of the zoning ordinance. Now we've clarified it, it's a sign that would require a permit under chapter 26. If it doesn't have its permit, it's prohibited.
So are we still quarterly sending our inspectors out and, and going up and down the corridors and looking for signs? Or have we changed our priority to maybe something a little different?
Well, the enforcement priorities, I think that the only time we, we would, it's about quarterly, but they kind of accumulate on our corridors in the right of way. So there is, they will spend a half a day doing a sweep on the corridors around quarterly, but mostly based on an observation that there's an accumulation. It's not this.
Yeah, but they're looking for more than, I mean, obviously, you and I've had this discussion.
Yeah.
They're looking for more than just the signs in the right of way. When they, when you give them that task, they're, they're looking at the whole entire corridor, all the businesses, not just the small signs that accumulated in the right of way that I think that we, that we prioritize to go out and get those.
It might be stuff on the edge near the right of way, yeah.
Yeah, no, that, but you know as well as I do that they've targeted certain commercial businesses that that, that the sign was prohibited. You know, we'll take Hy-Vee, for instance. They had, you know, pharmacy on the building where it's allowed in, in the suburbs, but we don't allow that. So our inspector went up and down all the corridors and find every Hy-Vee store that we had.
Yeah, well, first of all, it'd be multiple inspectors based on where our Hy-Vee's are located.
Well, you, but you're sending them out quarterly.
They're based on, like, I can tell you that the Hy-Vee's are based on complaints for the most part.
Yeah, no, that's not, that's not what happened.
Well, yeah, I mean, generally, our inspectors are, got enough to do that they're generally operating on complaints. And even the sweeps that you've mentioned?
Yeah.
Are based on an observation or a complaint that there's an accumulation of these.
So my question to you and to Scott, are we still doing the sweeps on a quarterly basis, or can we prioritize for them to go into our neighborhoods and maybe look at people parking in their front yards, people doing things that are actually affecting the neighborhood? And can we change that priority, prioritizing them to go out and looking for these small little signs unless they're complaint-based? But you're, the way I understood it, and I never knew this, that we were going out every quarter and, and looking down, up and down the corridor.
It's not like we put it, something on the calendar and say we're going out to do sweeps.
Well, that's the way it was explained to me, Eric, so.
But it, it probably is around quarterly when you look at the timing of it, and it does happen. So, but the, the answer to your other question is, we can certainly look at other things that need to be looked at.
I, I would, I would like that to be our priority.
That's, that's definitely.
The, the things that affect our neighbors, the, the parking in the cars, the, the illegal junk and debris that you can see from the street that nobody's calling in, that if they're, if they're driving around these looking at, you know, if you see a sign in the, in the right of way, pull it up. We, our public work should be doing that. We shouldn't be sending out our inspectors to do that. But I just think, and I know that's been happening quarterly, that's been a priority of us, to do that.
Sure.
And so I just want to make sure that, I would like to change that priority to do something else instead of doing.
Well, we would definitely want to get input from others.
Absolutely. But I think this is a good time to bring it up.
Okay, so let's keep going forward. We will relook at some of the priorities of what we see, but let's finish on the signs.
So another example that we had a little bit of, just in the small language of how it reads in our code, we wanted to make it more clear what unlicensed. it reads in our code, we wanted to make it more clear what unlicensed and inoperable trailers that have signs on them are... We can be able to enforce on those more effectively. And then, we did want to clarify that artistic murals are excluded from being considered signage, basically. And that we wanted to make it clear, and again, our inspectors were having training on what is considered a mural, an artistic mural, versus what is really amounts to signage. Just because it has, it says things in words doesn't mean it's not artistic mural. So, it really gets further into what the test is. But we want to enable and allow these artistic murals throughout the city, so that's the thing. Yeah, these are almost all painted, which if it's considered a sign, it would be prohibited because we generally don't allow painted signs on buildings, so...
So, like the mural that's on the lower right, did they have to get a permit for that?
No. No. Not unless it involves something with the building integrity or something like that, you know, like tuck pointing or something. It wouldn't require a zoning sign permit.
And we never looked at any content for any candy that is on the building?
If somebody calls us and said, "I'm planning to do a mural, and I want to know, is this going to be considered a sign? Or am I going to have to try to seek a variance or something for it?" Then, we will talk through that with them. So, we provide that consultation or guidance, but we don't have a process where we require them to submit an application. I mentioned about signs in the public interest. Right now, it's pretty structured in the way it reads in our code, but we wanted to add a flexible clause of "but not limited to" that gives us a little more where we can kind of stretch what we think is in the public interest. I've got a couple of examples up there. One of those is the signs you might see that warn people about the bike... What do you call it?
Ingersoll.
Yeah. The track, the bike track. I was losing... I didn't have my terminology at the top of my head. So, actually, the avenues got a grant for some signs on private property that warn people to look for the bikes on the bike track as well because they may be coming a little quicker. And pedestrians. Hopefully, the pedestrians are on the pedestrian part.
You have to cross both of them.
They're on the right.
What's that?
That looks like a pole sign.
That's like a little, what I want to call a platform. It's like a kiosk for information about the icon trails. So, that's just a...
I can't see how tall it is, but...
That's an example of like a sign. We wouldn't want to say that's counting against their sign earnings. It's really meant for an educational public purpose to let people understand the trail system and whether it's wayfinding or other important information they should learn about the trail system. So, that's just an example, but we have kind of, what do I call, informational signs all over that we don't want to get into saying they're signs.
And those can be on the poles?
Yeah, that's like a stand, yeah, yeah. Well, we aren't even treating them as signs, so we don't even get into whether they're a pole sign or a monument sign.
But it can't be a pole sign. It can't be at all.
Well, yeah, we would probably say if it's in the public interest, it needs to be at a scale that's serving that public interest, right?
I mean, that's...
Once they're trying to broadcast 200 feet away, that's a whole different thing, at that height that you're talking about.
I know. I sat through the four-hour meeting when we did signs a long time ago, and I'm not trying to bring anything back or change anything, but that's a pole sign you're allowing on the left there.
Well, if we called it a sign, yes.
Okay.
But by putting this little flexibility, we're saying it's something that's in the public interest, and we wouldn't treat it as a sign.
It's an identifier marker. It's a marker.
But that's a little bit of a problem for me if it's a pole sign. I mean...
Yeah, and again, it's... That language gives us some discretion. I think you have to trust that our staff is going to see what's reasonable in the public interest versus what's something beyond. I mean, why would the icon trails folks want to put it at, you know, 15 feet in height? Then, we probably start asking some questions.
I know, but we're allowing... My issue is, if you have an existing pole sign and somebody blasts it with a car, now all of a sudden, your cost to replace that has...
Yeah, it's gone really in the way our ordinance has it now, yeah, since 2013, actually.
Yeah, I know. I was here. I remember.
You're exactly right.
Signs everywhere, signs for the five hours that we sat here.
So, the next one, illuminated signs on canopies and awnings. Again, the 2019 really prohibited those. I think we got a lot of push from the industry. The zoning Board of Adjustment seemed to think that was reasonable, and they pretty much allowed anything that came on appeal to get an illuminated sign on a canopy. So, we just said, you know, there seems to be this general market condition where that's just the norm. And it doesn't seem... We still have some protections that they're not shining it at residential or neighborhood properties, so there's still that.
Are the prices up there?
That's seriously what they have.
That would be an electronic component, so they would have to go through another process for that.
The size would be regulated.
Yeah, yeah. If they got over a certain size and if... Yeah, so we haven't had a lot of push to put the pricing on the canopies, to be honest with you. Electronic for event centers, this is an example. That's actually a mock-up of their digital board that they're going to replace the banners that were granted years ago for the Wells Fargo, which will soon be Casey's. This reduces the level of appeal. Again, they're still going to have to go to the Board of Adjustment, but they're going to have it...
They'll still go to the Board of Adjustment.
Yeah, they'll still go to the Board of Adjustment to make sure that they're in character, so that they're not just unlimited, no holds barred kind of thing.
Well, I mean, we're not going to trust our partner that we partner with, our other government partner.
Well, this particular partner, yes, but not... I don't know. I don't want to pretend that everybody is that scrupulous, you know?
Is there other people that use them?
Right now, the burden is difficult to get the variance. This is... They'll be happier... They're more than happy to just go and ask for a type-two exception, and the public is aware of what the scale and the change is, so...
Why can't we change that to administratively? If we know, if you know the content and the event center wants to do that, why are we making them go through an additional process? We know this is our partner. We know they're... Why can't we make a policy that administratively you can change?
You could make it, instead of making this a type-two, you could ask for that to be changed to a type-one exception, which would be administrative.
Yeah, can we do that tonight?
You could ask that be changed. Tonight's a set hearing, so I think you would have to do another...
Can we put that in the... I mean, I don't understand why we wouldn't do that. Why are we making them go through multiple steps to put a sign up at the Iowa Event Center? That's silly.
So, everybody has a process. Theirs is going to be simple. They still need to go in front of the board.
Simple would be an administrative change. Simple is not going and paying the additional $300 cost to go to the Board of Adjustment. Simple is asking Eric and his staff to look at it and approve it administratively. Simple is not going to the Board of Adjustment. We're making it easier, but we're also charging them an additional cost.
Actually, the county wouldn't be charged, but other entities with event centers might, like a private event center.
I just...
It's really hard to carve out the public partners from the other partners.
Okay, then just make it... You can make an administrative change for all the partners, or you can send it to the Board of Adjustment if you want.
That's one approach, so...
If we would need...
Then, they would have to appeal your decision, yeah.
Yeah. I...
I mean, this is something we were saying was a variance, and all of a sudden, you're wanting to make it something that would get administrative discretion. And so, I guess just think about that as well, but...
I do.
Okay.
I think the issue for me is the, just the predictability and like dependability when we include a larger board that can establish conditions and all that kind of stuff. It, in theory, is a simpler process, but the, you know, there's still a wide range of possibilities of that process, and I'd like to see us be more predictable. And I trust staff to be apolitical on that and look at it in a way. And if it is political or there's concerns, staff can turn it down and send it to the Board of Adjustment for the same thing.
The only reservation I have is on the fact that no other use gets electronic signs mounted on a building, period. So, we've created this little niche for the large event centers, but we didn't allow... It's a variance for everybody else. So, the question will be on the legal side, when something else wants a sign, why do we have such a difficult test versus something of this nature? So, I don't know if... I'm a little concerned about making it administrative, but that doesn't mean you can't, as a council, decide that that would be the change.
It's a public entity.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at this sign, like Monster Jam was just in town. I think it was Monster Jam. Doesn't that promoter pay for the right to put that sign up there? I mean, administratively...
The content is not regulated. So, you have to understand, they could put Coca-Cola up there, they could put...
Yeah.
They could put Casey's pizzas up there as a new sign. I mean, they can put whatever they want. It's content...
Any events that they want to...
But they're paying for it to do that.
They're probably paying the owner, the county, yeah.
Yeah.
And this sign allows for video.
Yep.
Motion.
They could ask for video under a type-two as well. That's already in the code.
That's the biggest distinction in my mind. Which can be a distraction to motorists.
Motorist driving. Okay.
I like the predictability. I'd like to look at that. Because, you know, a board can change at any point in time, and right now, yes, maybe the Board of Adjustment is predictable, but at any point in time, one of us could change and all of a sudden can throw a wrench in those boards. And so, the predictability from staff would be a lot easier than a predictability from a five-member board or seven or whatever it is. I'd like to try that.
I think on the things that are pretty uniform all the time, I mean, if it would vary...
Yeah, and I think if we start seeing those trends, we definitely bring them to the council because, you know, we're just beating our head in the wall.
We've just talked about what a great partner Polk County's been with other things. And I consider them a part... That's why they're able to... This is something that we can partner with them on and make it a little more predictable and easier for them to be able to do.
And this already does that, but you're asking maybe a little more.
I'm asking for them not to have to go to the Board of Adjustment.
So, this next one actually kind of feeds into exactly what you're talking about as well. So, this is a change that would pretty much put everything except the few things we talked about, billboards, electronic signs, and prohibited type signs, take those out of the variance unnecessary hardship and put them under the practical difficulty type-two. Right now, anything that exceeds 500 or 50% of the numerical standard, whether that's area, number of signs, all that triggers a variance the way the code reads. So, this will make it... So, pretty much anything can be seen as a type-two exception by the Board of Adjustment. So, again, it doesn't stop them from having to go in front of the board, but it makes it simpler for the board to allow things that make sense.
Eric, I don't know if this is still the case, but back when I was practicing architecture more robustly, staff would write in their report to the Board of Adjustment, an honest opinion, you know, the neighborhood association approved this, et cetera, et cetera. And that seemed to carry a lot of weight. Is that still the case?
I think they still do that. They look at the character evaluation and whether this is a real impact or on the neighbors or, you know, is the scale out of proportion, that type of thing. So, I think that's all still looked at. So, there could be an example here where a type-two consideration might still get a negative recommendation because it's just out of whack, you know? But it still has this process, so we still have a process for the Board.
My point being, staff reports make a difference.
They do. They do, yeah, certainly.
Most of the time with most board members, right?
The last one here is this alignment with Chapter 26. If you go to Chapter 26, there's a finite list of things that really don't require a permit at all. You don't have to file an application to get a permit. We wanted to add that, add to that, the 15 square foot or less would be exempted from a permit, mostly because those signs are small enough, they don't trigger any type of safety concern.
On the private property.
Yeah, on a private property. Anything in the public right-of-way is looked at by traffic, so...
Eric, can you go back to the previous slide?
Yes.
Jim Hoff has known me for a very long time, and he will be shocked that I'm bringing this up. But since we're in the Easter season, I think the city can be my confessor. One of the items that's not in, under, some signs do not require permits, is that which is behind glass or that which is behind the windows. And back when my office did Walgreens stores, we did 89 Walgreens stores, and I made a pilgrimage to Deerfield one time to ask them, "What challenges are you having in developing your stores?" And their number one answer was, "Lack of signage." We all know what a Walgreens looks like. We don't think they lack signage. They thought they lacked signage. So, I came up with the concept of the glass tower, and they could put anything behind that, neon, which they do. And that proliferated all over the country, and now many cities are adding to their sign ordinances, signage. Actually, West Des Moines reads something like, "Anything that is attention-getting, either on the building or inside the building, visible from public right-of-way, shall be considered signage." And I think, which I think is overboard, but you talked about the vape stores and all these bright lights. That's the opportunity to start controlling those things.
Yeah.
And I think maybe we, I think we should look at something like that.
And it's something that we're... I told you that there will be some more out here into the future that we didn't get in this batch, and one of those is going to be the, how we're going to nail down or tighten up the, what's considered window signs. We have limitations on window signs now, but there's a lot of questions, like you said, if it's on a wall, you know, how far does that wall have to be away from the window, that type of thing? So, that isn't really defined in our code right now.
Five is five feet, you know? What I don't want to have happen is, I think of the local stores, a pet store, they put little doggy images in the windows and whatnot. I would hate to see that go away. But these vape stores and whatnot that are like...
Neon lights.
Yeah, yeah. Lighting is another piece of it, the brightness and flashing and those types of things. So, we're definitely looking at that, seeing that we've kind of had this little influx of those attraction devices, so to speak. So, we're definitely going to look at that. Again, I think, I don't know if there's a lot of case law around the country on, you know, what, where that line is drawn at this point, but we'll look, we'll probably have to do that analysis to see what we think we can enforce.
I would say, and thank you for bringing that up. I was going to bring it up at the end of this. You know, we talked about it a couple of weeks ago. This is an issue where I think our residents would appreciate us testing the limits. And if we got to be the case study on this one, you know, so be it, because I think, like, it's pretty clear to me, every year, technology with new LED lights and other things are making it really easy and affordable for people to be a nuance and a nuisance in our neighborhoods. And we just got to find a way to deal with it.
Yeah, and yeah, the challenge is how it's written and how we can enforce, and, you know, if we have to take it to court, can we succeed? So, we definitely have to be there.
Other communities have done it.
Well, yeah. And like you said, though, are they overstepping, and then we're eliminating what makes sense? So, how do we divide up what seems like it makes sense?
I think you could go by brightness.
What's kind of a scourge or an impact on the neighborhood, so...
The degree of brightness eliminated.
So, we have, in our code now, we have 75 lumens, but that's probably way too much. And the other thing is, we don't have the equipment to actually effectively measure that, so that if we got in front of a judge, we could say, "Yeah, that was above..."
If I may, one other quick item that we probably don't have purview over, but we talked about billboards. I've always contended that the county doesn't collect enough property taxes from landowners who... taxes from landowners who have slivers of ground with billboards. Those billboards are hugely valuable and generate an enormous amount of income, and they pay almost nothing in property taxes for that sliver of ground. And if somehow we can get due taxes from that ground, it would only be fair.
Is there a state law change?
I don't really even understand the formula for where they come up with that land value and the structure value completely. So that probably is a conversation with the assessor and what they're able to do under the legal formula. But I don't disagree with you.
The other thing on that I just add is not just the thin slivers, but ensuring that income property owned by a nonprofit is taxed as well. As I look at the last, you know, half dozen or so cell phone towers that I've watched, it's gone on non-property tax-paying entities. And I'm not quite sure if anybody's tracking that to begin, to begin levying taxes there.
Yes, sir.
Going back to the illuminated signs
Yes.
in the windows, so if you sought to enforce that, could existing signs get a waiver or not?
That's another challenge to this, is what's the, what's the, we would have to be able to demonstrate that this was something that occurred since the new ordinance took effect. So there might be some situations where we had longstanding, you know, bar signs or whatever. It's actually already in there that the illuminated signs can't be in the windows, but, but we know a lot of them existed before that, so...
So there are some vape shops, again, in particular, those have not been long existing.
Yeah. And we've, we have enforced, we've sent notices on situations where they're putting lit signs, flashing signs, things like that in the windows. We get complaints on them and we, as much as we document.
Chris, have you talked about, have you talked about some in particular in your neighborhood?
Towers?
No, the shops.
With the bright lights.
A couple weeks ago, I showed you, I showed you pictures too of some of them at night. Yeah. I don't, to me, it's not just about one industry, but one industry in my area seems to be a lot of the new tenants. And the new tenants are using bright lights to gain attention, and it's a problem. But yeah, there's one in particular that drives me nuts.
And we, again, we're challenged because we got to define it. How do we treat it differently than somebody's Christmas display, that type of thing?
Got it. Okay. With that, signs are complicated, and the rules around it seem to be complicated. And we will get more information.
Yeah. And if you want to have a conversation about certain impacts, I'm, well, you know, because I want to have an understanding of what the council's concerns are for sure when we try to look at changes in the codes.
Eric, one last thing. When you talk about murals, and I mean, I like murals, I'd like to see that, but I'm aware of a couple of them where they've like incorporated some business names in it. And to me, that then goes into a sign.
Yeah, yeah. That gets to be in the commercial speech, yeah. So if we see that, we generally caution them that they need to, you know, amend it out somehow without destroying the artistic value of it. But, but yes, that does happen.
It's a sign.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to sign off this meeting right now. Thank you, Carl.
Yeah.
And we will reconvene at...
Thanks for your patience.
4:55.
Thank you.
For tonight's regular city council meeting. And thank you for all the information. And this...